Go.
Great, thank you very much and welcome everybody to the North Bend City Council meeting for August 3rd via virtual meeting as we have been doing for over a year now. Call to order, with the clerk, please confirm the role.
All council members are present, your honor.
Thank you very much. First item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. There are seven items. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
You have a second.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. God help, second by Ms. Miller. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
And any opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. At this time, it is the citizens' opportunity to speak to council. If there is a member of the public wishing to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine on your phone and you'll be called upon. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. You start with your name and address for the record. Dana, do we have anyone?
Yes, Liz Davis, you're free to speak.
Hold on. Oh, you unmuted me. Thank you.
Liz, yes. Yep.
Okay, I thought you'd like to see who I am. All I would like to do is invite all of you and anybody who listens to this recording to the Friends of the North Bend Library pop-up sale that we are holding on Saturday, August 14th from 10:00 to 4:30 on the lawn next to the library. We'd love to see you there. It's our, we were just pandemicked out of our last sale a year ago, a year and a half ago in March, and this is our first in-person sale that we're going to be able to hold, and it's only one day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Liz, while I know you well, please give your name and address for the record.
Oh, shoot. And I was thinking of that. Elizabeth Davis, 225 Taylor Avenue South, North Bend. Sorry, you guys. I didn't mean to add to you. Thank you for agreeing.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else?
Nope.
Right. Seeing and hearing none. We'll move on to announcements, presentations, and appointment. Item eight on the agenda is presentation on police services legislative update. I believe we have Chief Phillips as well as Captain Almquist with us tonight. Chief, turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you to give kind of a brief, I'm gonna be brief too, on this overview of some recent legislation that was passed and signed by Governor Inslee and how it may impact our level of service. So I wanted to bring that to you. I'm not gonna go through all the legislation. There was basically 12 legislative bills that we're dealing with, police reform. Some of them impact us, some of them we already do, and I'll talk a little bit about that. Both of them became effective July 25th, so they're currently the law, and we are complying with those. And before I go into too much, we are gonna comply, obviously, with anything that the legislation passed. And I know there's been a lot of discussion, if you have been watching the news or reading the social media on some of the impacts that other agencies have been talking about, whether it be not responding to certain calls for service or taking away some of their options as far as less lethal. And so I wanted to come before you and tell you what we are going to do and my direction with our officers. And so I'm gonna basically talk about three of the bills that really are the main ones that are we're talking about and the three that may impact us, and that is HB 1054, which is the police tactics, HB 1310, use of force, SB 5476, which is what they call the Blake decision, the legislature's response to the Blake decision. And I may touch base on a couple other ones, but not really go in depth on those. And so, you know, first I'll talk about the police tactics, HB 1054, and what the requirements on there. As we talked about about a year ago, I think there was some concerns about the some of the issues, whether it be chokeholds or no-knock warrants. And I identified at that time that we do currently have that in our policy. We do currently comply with that. And that's what 1054 deals with is, is the prohibits of chokeholds and neck restraints. We do not do that. That is what is in our policy. Prohibits no-knock warrants. We also do not do any no-knock warrants. And we haven't for years. And all police officers must properly be identified, meaning they either have to have their name on their uniform or a badge number. We have both. So we comply with that legislative requirement. One of the issues that I had to come to a decision on, and that was there is a military equipment component of this legislation. And in this component, it described military equipment. What is that? And if you had any of the military equipment that you obtained through what they call the 1033 program through the military, you would have to return that by a certain date. Identify that you have it and then return it. And we had one issue that was a discussion point, and that was we have what you call a Cayman. It's a, some people call it an MRAP. We call it MAX. It was out at your demonstration. It wasn't at that location, but it was in the area. And some people would consider that a military equipment. But under the law, in order to be considered military equipment, that vehicle would have to be armed. And our vehicle is not armed. It's not an offensive vehicle. It's a vehicle for, to keep officers safe. Whether there may, you could utilize it in maybe a flood situation or other situations where there's safety involved. We don't use it as any kind of force option or anything like that. And then another prohibition was shooting at a vehicle. That is also in our policy currently. We restrict that, and we always have. One of the big parts of HB 1054 is pursuit. That has really restricted our ability to pursue a vehicle. We know that there's probably a need to reevaluate on pursuits when we can and when we can't. I think we had a pretty good policy in place. This really limits us to violent offenses, sex offenses, and escape or a reasonable suspicion, and you'll hear that again, reasonable suspicion of a DUI. Other than that, we cannot pursue. And so if you think about it, there's a lot of times that we have maybe reasonable suspicion. We think that maybe somebody is involved in a crime or just committed a crime, and we initiate a traffic stop, that vehicle takes off, we would pursue them. We won't be able to do that anymore because that level has been raised up with probable cause, meaning that person has to have done the crime. So it's gonna limit our pursuits tremendously in that aspect, and that's gonna be a culture change to a degree of when we can and cannot pursue. And if you have any questions while in pocket, I don't know how you'd wanna do that, but obviously I'm available for that unless you wanna leave it at the end.
It's totally up to you, chief. I do see Mr. Elwood's hand.
Go ahead.
I'm just, to get clarity on what you just said. If you pull me over and I take off, you can't pursue me unless you have evidence that I've committed the crime.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, that's kind of baffling to me, but what would be the course of action in that if an officer had reasonable suspicion as opposed to reasonable probable cause?
Well, you know, I truly want to answer your question. I'm gonna be kind of vague on this because, you know, this is such an ongoing issue. But let's take, for instance, a scenario where, and this was common, where we'd have a theft at the outlet mall. And typically, they get back on the outlet mall, they go 90 westbound. We would be very successful in locating that vehicle going westbound on 90 and pulling behind him, and many times it initiated a pursuit. And on a past policy, we would evaluate that pursuit on the, you'd have to weigh it on the risk factor. How much traffic there is? How fast are they going? How aggressive are they driving? What's the experience of the police officer that's chasing them? What is the really need to catch them at this point? You know, identify them later? All those factors came into play, whether we pursued them or continued to pursue them. Now all those are out, and we just cannot pursue unless we have what you described was reasonable suspicion. We cannot pursue on that. So we would have to have more than just a vehicle description that's leaving the outlet mall without confirming there's a theft or a crime and confirming that that person actually committed that crime. And this is gonna be difficult, but we're gonna have to work around it. It's like a lot of things in law enforcement over the years. You know, when there's new law that's enacted, you find other ways to do it within the law to find and locate the person that committed the crime. And so, you know, we're gonna have to find other ways to do it. We don't know how that's gonna be done right now, but it's what we've been presented.
Thank you.
So if there's no other questions for HB 1054, I'm gonna move on to HB 1310.
Chief, I have one question for you.
Go ahead.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong. So someone with the speeding ticket, if they don't slow down, you can't pursue them?
This is true. There has to be, and there has to be an imminent threat to the community or somebody. It says it, if you can read on the limit, there also has to be an imminent threat is another reason that you can chase them. So say, say somebody is, had just, if you can articulate the facts to show that this person that's driving the car is causing imminent danger to somebody in the community or the community itself, then you could continue to pursue that vehicle, but you still have to evaluate that pursuit as you go along. It doesn't give you free rein just to pursue because you have, have these, meet these requirements. You still have to face the risk on the need to catch them, can we identify them later? And, you know, the risk to the driver and the community. So, like I said, this, when you start thinking about it, it really does present a problem for us in the enforcement of some of these crimes that we deal with around here.
Like, yes, speeding in a school zone is not something you can enforce anymore.
Hey, Chief Pips, I have a question.
No. Well, we can enforce if they pull over, but if they decide to take off, you know, we have to find another way, and it's gonna be time, time-consuming. But, you know, we're gonna do our best to try and, to try and hold them accountable for that.
Just tell me you could at least mail them the ticket for speeding in a school zone? No.
Well, you know, we would have to investigate it. We would do more investigations into the vehicle and who was driving the vehicle, and that's, that's where the time this comes in. It's gonna take more effort on our part to find out who the driver was and hold them accountable. It's gonna be, like I said, it's gonna be a long process.
Chief Pips, so can you not get their identities from license plates or facial recognition from like their driver's license?
Well, we don't have any facial recognition capabilities. As far as, that's an investigative tool as far as the license plate. As you know, that's not a guarantee, whether the vehicle stolen, plates were changed. We don't know who the driver is. That's why we have to get the best description we can while we have them in sight of the driver to see if we can identify them later, if that officer can identify that person later. We can also try and identify that person through the investigation if they committed a theft. Once we confirm they committed a theft, we could try and identify them through, we could identify them through, you know, the investigation portion. And once we do that, then we can, we can try and locate them and arrest them. But, you know, as far as pursuing them, that, like I said, that's very, very limited scope that we can pursue vehicle.
If there's other questions.
Thank you. I was just noticing, just wanted to also comment as I see Mr. God help and Mr. Elwood. There are a few of you are off-screen currently because of the presentation. So if you're trying to get our attention and I'm not seeing you, you're gonna need to speak up. Alan, I think I saw your hand.
Thank you. So let me ask a question. So if you, after this investigation you do, you identify these people, are there additional charges that could be put on them for leaving the scene or anything else like that? And are there things from a legislative point of view that we should be enacting to help?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I usually get that at the end. You know, what can you do to help? Whether it be legislative adjustments to what we have presented here or, and I'll get into one that I really believe is, is probably the most important thing that is a legislature that you can do as a council member or the mayor, and that is be a voice in, in what I'm gonna get to later is mental health, help, the funding and the resources for mental health. And I'll get that into this next section, which is HB 1310, which is use of force, and we'll talk a little bit about that.
But are there, to answer the question, I guess, on the penalties, are there something above or do they just get a ticket once you investigate it? I mean, the sad part about it is the people that are law-abiding do something by accident or are gonna pull over. It's those that may have alternative motives that I think scare most of us, that you don't have the ability to stop.
Yes, I mean, your concern is mine too. It's definitely gonna make us change and try and find better ways to hold people accountable. We know that the people that stop are gonna be your, if you will, citizens that usually would comply or if you wanna call them good citizens. I don't, I'm not sure what that entails, but most citizens will stop. But it's those that don't. And then obviously that makes you think, you know, why? You know, obviously, there's more to the picture here than just a speeding or something to that effect. I mean, that is a big concern of all law enforcement, is what are the impacts that this legislation gonna cause? I, I understand that there needed to be police reform. I think everybody did. And I support the idea of changing some of the ways that we did things. I just, some of these are going to be difficult on not only the law enforcement side to hold people accountable. It's gonna be difficult for the community and the citizens and the people that live in our communities to understand why we can't do things that we used to be able to do. That's gonna be a difficult part.
Mr. Elwood, I saw your hand.
So, one of the things that occurred to me as you were talking is that communicating the change, especially to businesses who would be calling for your help and services, and really communicating the importance of what it would mean to get good testimony or good observations of who it is and why. To arm the officers with as much probable cause data that they can in that moment would probably be pretty important. So I'm just curious, are you thinking about some sort of communication campaign or some way to get the word out, at least to business owners, to say, look, if something happens, you really have to pay close attention in that moment, collect all the data that you can to really help us help you, you know, with this crime? Is that something that's in your plan or is that something that comes back to the city? I'm just curious.
No, I've already started that. I've met with St. Kwame Valley Hospital. I met with Echo Glen. I'm meeting with the business owners tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock. I think, obviously, part of the plan is the communication, but I don't wanna scare people. I don't want to say this is, you know, just a terrible, terrible thing. I think that we're gonna, it is what it is, and we have to work with it. But I do agree with you that we have to convey what the level of service is and what we can and cannot do to the people that have expectations from the past of what we did. So we have to make them aware. So I'm in the process of doing that. I think there's, like I said, a lot of stuff out there from other agencies. My thinking is different than a lot of the agencies, and I will touch base on those on the last couple pages that help out what we're talking about. So if there's.
Move on?
Yeah. Okay, I'll move on to HB 1310, use of force. This one presents the issue that is probably as concerning as the, as the one we just discussed. In order for a law enforcement officer to use force, they have to have probable cause to make that arrest. So in other words, we cannot use force to detain somebody that says, I don't care if you want me to stop, I'm gonna take off and run away from you or something to that effect. We can chase them, but we can't use force to detain them at all. So the only time we can use force is if there's probable cause to make an arrest. That means they, we believe they actually did the crime. We need, we can also protect against imminent threat or bodily injury to either an officer, another, or anybody that's in that area. We can protect them, if you will. We can be a guardian, if you will. And then we can use deadly force only when necessary to protect someone from threat of serious physical injury or death. So that's not really changed a whole lot. They put in the word necessary, which is, which should be anyway. I mean, we don't wanna just use deadly force just because we can. You have to look at all the facts to where, you know, when you use deadly force, it's a necessary use, obviously. That's, to me, a simple, simple request or law. But it's problematic in the fact that, say, somebody going back to, to somebody making a theft or committing a theft at, say, the outlet mall, and they're walking away, and we stop and detain them like we used to, we would detain them, and then we go back to the store, confirm there was a theft, and then we'd be able to arrest them if they properly identified them. Now, if that person said, I'm not waiting, I'm gonna take off, we have no reason to use force to detain them. We can follow them to wherever they're going or walk around with them or whatever. And then once we got probable cause, then we can use force to detain them, but it's problematic at best to be able to effectively, on those minor crimes or those theft-type crimes, to hold somebody accountable in that situation. So, and as you can tell, I'm being pretty vague on my descriptions as far as, you know, these type of crimes of what we can and cannot do. And there's a reason for that. I think some of it would have to be in like an executive session with you as well, like I did with Snoke County City Council. I'm being kind of vague, but I apologize about that. One of, one of the most important parts about HB 1310, and again, I agree with this wholeheartedly, is it creates a duty of care. And what that is, is they're basically saying you need to, you need to exhaust all available de-escalation processes before you go on to any kind of other tactic using force or anything. So if it dictates time, like you have to just wait and try and talk them out of it, then you do that. If it takes distance, like taking yourself away from that, close distance from somebody to try and de-escalate the situation, then that's what we're going to do. And then obviously, we can't use any amount of force. It's what's necessary. We only use the minimum amount of force that's needed or required to take this person into custody or control this person. So that's pretty simple, but it creates that duty of care. And as you know, I think any of you that know how we do business, we've always done de-escalation. We've always talked to people. We've always tried to do our best in not using force, and our data that we have shows that. We have very, very little use of forces on this department. So, if anybody has any questions on 1310?
I do. I like 1310 by the, I deal with this at work myself and like escalating people that are mentally unill or, or it doesn't work. So just to be able to talk them off the ledge if you can, and maybe you can't, but just to back off and give them space is very helpful. And getting in the grill is not, and so I'm hoping with more training, this will help all of us.
Well, 1310, and you brought up to the most critical point that I'm concerned about, and that is, you know, we go to a lot of calls with people that are in crisis, whether it be mental or they're, they're just in a crisis situation. And there's many departments that are just saying, we're not responding to those anymore. We're not responding to check the welfares anymore. If it's not crime-related, if they, if they're not reporting that a crime committed, we're just not going. My philosophy is different than that. I believe that somebody calls us for a need, somebody calls us for assistance, we're gonna respond. Now, in the past, we would be able to detain that person in mental health crisis because unfortunately, we don't have the resources here for the mental health crisis to respond. We usually have to take them to the hospital, and sometimes it'll take six, eight hours for them to get on scene. And that's the biggest push I can ask is, you know, we need to have more resources here in the valley as far as mental health crisis. And it's gonna take funding, and it's not just funding locally. I don't want the Snoke County Valley to be left out. I want us to be included in that, but the state is gonna have to fund this as best they can, and we're gonna have to start enhancing our ability to have first responder, mental health experts that can decide whether this person that is in crisis needs additional help. We can't make that decision, and in the past, we used to use even some type of force to, to bring him to help, if you will, to detain them. We can't do that anymore. So it's gonna have to be a unified response. It's gonna take fire to respond with us, and there's a big push right now with the fire departments throughout the state that are very concerned because they are becoming the first responders, if you will, to those type of calls. But they're not gonna, in this valley, North Bend and Snoke County, that's not the case. We are gonna respond with them because we still have a responsibility to be there, to protect those that are there, everybody involved. And if a crime does occur, then we're on-site and we can deal with it then. So we're still gonna respond to all calls for service, just like we always have, and that's one of the biggest differences.
So what, I mean, where would you wanna take these mentally, these people that need help? They obviously can't go to St. Kwame Valley Hospital, and all of our mental hospitals are full up. What would your preference be? I know Western or Harborview or all of that, everybody's full. Like, we just need more mental health everywhere, but where would you want our St. Kwame Valley people to go?
Well, I mean, ideally, we would hopefully have a first responder, and sometimes they, you know, the greatest thing would be if they had the ability to, to respond out to the scene, to help that person in crisis so we don't have to do any kind of use of force, or it doesn't escalate to where there's a need to use force. The legislature says specifically that mental health crisis first responders would need to respond and assist in the evaluation and make that determination. But here today, as we sit, we don't have that ability to have that. So we have to take our time and try and, if you will, talk them into going with us willingly to go to the hospital, and then hopefully they don't leave the hospital. That was the question that the hospital had. What if they just leave? You know, where we used to be able to hold them there until they got help.
So I guess I'm asking, are we talking about suicidal ideation or homicidal ideation or more?
Yeah, it's even that, because that's not a crime, so we can't use force. That's, that's somebody with the mental health crisis, that's an expert that's trained in those kind of evaluations that can determine that they need help. If some, you know, every situation is gonna be different, and that's what I've talked to our sergeants about. Every, every situation, the sergeant's gonna have to evaluate on what are the next steps based on what they have in front of them. And so, you know, I guess I'm gonna side on the fact that we're gonna try and help whatever we can, but we're gonna still comply with the law. We can't use force, and they're very specific about that. And you, you're starting to see some of the problems that we're going to, to face. So.
You move to the next chief?
Yeah, I'm ready. Go on. And the last one I'm gonna touch on is HB 5476, which is the legislature's response to what they call the Blake decision. And the, it's page seven for the slide. What it dictates is basically the state of Washington versus Blake decision came about, and it dealt with possession of a controlled substance for personal use and how we respond to that. So the legislature, in response to that, the court decision basically said that personal use The legislature, in response to that, the court decision basically said that personal use of a, of a, say, methamphetamine or coke, or cocaine or heroin uh, was a, was a misdemeanor. Um, and essentially, law enforcement couldn't do what they used to do, and that was arrest them in most situations. And so the Blake decision uh, response by the legislature said, we understand they made, they made it a misdemeanor, but with the caveat that the first two contacts, when you find somebody with some of those controlled substances for personal use, that you had to give them a resource paper so they could seek help if they needed. And then we would document that we contacted them. Now, on the third response, we could actually take them into custody uh, and, and book them into jail, but it took three responses. Uh, we're starting to work through that because how do you keep track of the, how many contacts they have? They could have two in North Bend, they could have one in Redmond, they could have, you know, one in, in Snoqualmie, and and how do you keep that track? And we're starting to work on a statewide resource for that, to try and track those. Uh, but that presents a problem too. Uh, you know, we, we have a canine dog that's narcotics trained that has been doing fantastic work. And so far, this legislation has pretty much caused us to not be able to use our canine narcotics detection dog. And we're in the evaluation process right now that we probably will not have that resource uh, moving forward on that. Um, and so this, this uh, re, this resolution by the legislature goes, it expires July first of twenty twenty-three, so it's a two-year legislation, and the hope is, is that they'll have more time to develop legislation that, that really satisfies uh, not only what they would like, but also what the community would like, and uh, because this is a big problem, and in fact, there's a lot of departments that are saying, we're just not gonna do anything. And it, it's kinda crazy, but we will still, like, if we come upon somebody, we will still take that drug from them and book it in for destruction because it's still a federal offense. So we will take that drug from them, we won't charge them on anything, but we will just uh, have it, uh, have it destroyed. And the same thing with any kind of paraphernalia, whether it be um, uh, you know, a, a syringe or anything to inject or ingest or inhale the drug, that's no longer a crime like it used to be, so. Uh, you know, this is another one of those changes in how we do business. It's gonna change a lot of things as far as uh, our ability to hold somebody accountable uh, that is using drugs. But the bigger picture is, is it gave us that leverage, if you will, to get them help. Um, when we were able to arrest them, we were able to, to have some leverage to, to get them help for their, for their use of that, that narcotic, uh, and I think that this may, may cause a problem in that going forward, so.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Loudback.
Thanks, Chief. Uh, with regard to the Blake decision, um, if somebody is also in violation of another statute, for instance, uh, we're talking about drugs here, obviously, uh, what if it was a minor? Does it pertain, what do you do with a minor in possession of, of the substances? Um, you know, while, let's say marijuana was legal uh, for adult consumption, but if there's an underage person with that, all you could do is confiscate, or?
No.
Would you be able to uh, arrest them because they are a minor in possession?
Yeah, we would confiscate it, but obviously, on that one, we're not gonna just let a juvenile go on that one. Uh, minimally, minimally, we would contact a parent or guardian for that juvenile. Uh, and if we had to, you know, that's one that we may spend some time on because we're not going to find somebody or locate somebody, a, a juvenile that's in possession of one of these controlled substances and basically just take it away and let them walk away. Um, we're gonna get ahold of a guardian on that. As far as an arrest, we're not gonna be able to arrest that. We're gonna do the same kind of situation as we would with an adult.
Okay, thank you.
So I got your point about uh, the canine uh, unit. I would, I would just hope that we do a little bit more thinking on that before you release that resource from your tool belt. Um, because if it's, if it's coming down to a point where we need to document before we can actually take appropriate action, I can see where a canine unit can help with the documentation, especially with repeat offenders, but I'm not in your career, I'm not an expert at all, I'm just a outsider giving an observation, but I can see that being a valuable resource to you, even with the current restraints.
Yeah, and that, that's one of the areas I could probably talk to you offline. It, it's, it's a, that's where probable cause and reasonable suspicion really comes into play when a dog alerts on a find of a controlled substance. There, that uh, that allows us to get a search warrant on the vehicle, but um, not anymore. At least that's not what the industry standard is. And, and, and like I said, I think that's something that, if you'd like to talk about that, I'm more than happy to talk about uh, offline on that. Um, we have done some extensive, uh, and I have done some extensive um, evaluation on this. Uh, one, one of the issues is the handlers moved to uh, to Arizona, uh, to become an officer in Arizona. That presented a problem as well, because our handler moved. Uh, and, and then with this legislation, uh, it, it's caused a lot of problems with statewide canine narcotics trained dogs. Uh, and so I would be more than happy to talk to you about that.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Table's still yours, or you?
Trying to get through this quick and apologize, but these, these are good questions, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have, so. Um, the, the page eight, um, I talked about others. Officer decertification is a big one within the organizations and officers. It basically gave the CJTC, which is our, our training academy, the ability to, uh, look into officer discipline, and if they feel like it's needed or they would want to do their own investigation, they have, they've been given the authority to do that, and they have the ability to decertify an officer if they deem that necessary. And, and that's a component to get some of those, if you will, uh, bad cops off the streets. I know there's a lot of discussion about why are there bad cops on the streets. This is of the manner the legislature decided that was uh, able to get some of those bad cops off the street by decertifying them. Um, HB twelve sixty-seven talks about office independent investigations. That is, the Attorney General's Office is now developing a independent investigative unit that can investigate any uses of force. Typically, it's gonna be uses of deadly force, but they can investigate any use of force uh, that they would like um, to look into. And so that's, that's a new uh, unit that's, that can do that. We don't know how that's gonna all play out. Uh, but that's gonna, that's gonna be something that is just being developed. And then the last thing is SB fifty-sixty-six, which is the duty to intervene. That is something we've always had in our policy. That's a requirement for any officer on scene that, that sees any type of inappropriate excessive use or any type of wrongdoing, if you will, by an officer there. Have a duty to intervene in that behavior and notify a supervisor uh, when they do observe that. So that's, that's SB fifty-sixty-six. So that's, that's, that's all I have as far as um, the, the legislature goes, that I, I was gonna bring forward to you. In the future, there's gonna be some issues with uh, recording uh, adults and juveniles when they're being questioned, and that'll be coming into play in effective January first of twenty twenty-two, and that may cause us to minimally get uh, recorders, audio recorders, but possibly uh, body cameras as well. Um, and that's being uh, evaluated right now as we move forward, to comply with those legislative demand, demands.
Chief, that's fantastic report. Very much appreciate you being here tonight. Uh, any final questions, uh, Mr. Loudback? I see your hand up.
Thanks, Chief. We talked about this briefly before at a committee meeting. Uh, what are the implications for non-lethal force uh, being used when they're removing some of your more effective non-lethal tools?
Well, thank you for that question. I, I, I would have thought I gave you that question, but I appreciate that question. That is one of the biggest uh, controversies, if you will, that is going on within the law enforcement community is whether or not, say, let's just take for instance, the beanbag shotgun. That's a less lethal resource that we currently have. Uh, there's, there's some that believe that that is considered a military weapon, and therefore they took it off the streets. I do not have that perception. I believe that's a less lethal weapon, and the most, the more less lethal options we have to not have to use deadly force, I will fight for that, and that's why we're continuing to have less lethal. And I'll tell you what justifies that is, uh, that's basically dealt with in HB ten fifty-four, but in HB thirteen ten, the legislature actually says in thirteen ten that they encourage as many resources of less lethal, including beanbags. So in thirteen ten, it essentially says, we would like you to utilize as much less lethal as possible, give those resources to the officers, including beanbags that you can. So I'm, I'm gonna side with not only thirteen ten, but I'm gonna side with the fact that I'm not taking a less lethal resource away from an officer out on the scene and limit what options they have to, to control the situation. That's, that's my perception, and as we're seeing, as we move forward, that perception is starting to become more and more prevalent among not just lo, uh, law enforcement, but against, but for the legislatures as well. Uh, and today, in fact, uh, I, I read that CJTC, who does all of our decertification, as I talked about, and all of our training, actually agrees with me on that evaluation. So I feel pretty confident that that's the appropriate way to go.
Yeah, it's kind of ironic, isn't it? They want you to use beanbags, but they take away the beanbag gun, so apparently they want you to become cornhole experts.
Thanks.
I have a question about fifty fifty-one and bad officers.
Yeah.
Um, so there is a, a while back, there was an officer that was uh, relieved from Tuck Willa and then got hired onto Snoqualmie, and at some point had a prisoner at Harborview that was restrained, and he like used pepper spray, and the whole ED had to get evacuated, and it was just a red hot mess. But my question is, with fifty fifty-one, would someone that was fired from a other police department be able to be rehired in another police department?
Well, that's, that's supposedly what this is supposed to um, deal with, but I'll, I'll tell you, that should be the responsibility of the chief that's at that department, and I don't know the specifics of, of that, of that, what you're talking about. But I know in my evaluation, um, you know, when we do the background, um, and it is a thorough background, uh, you know, that's something that I would take into consideration. Uh, obviously, it depends on the behavior that caused the firing, but you know, that's, that's a responsibility the department had to make sure that the people they're hiring uh, don't have that kind of issue. But like I said, I do not know all the facts behind that, that situation, and so I, I can't comment on that situation, but I can tell you moving forward that not only did the decertification process help that, but to be honest with you, um, if somebody's been fired from a police department, um, I, I gotta tell you, I don't know why I would ever hire somebody that has been fired from a police department. Uh, it, it would be hard for me to understand what kind of circumstance I would do that on.
And I get that. I guess I was asking if that legislative bill would help with that.
Well, it does have some components of the background investigation and what's required, uh, but we already do that. Um, and, and some of it has to be law enforcement, law enforcement working together uh, and not, and not uh, being, being forthcoming with all the information as well. There's a, a responsibility there as well.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
I think, I think that's all. I think, as you can tell, I, I just wanna say one more thing, and that is, you know, we're gonna continue to do our mission and purpose, and, and the bottom line is, is we're gonna continue the levels of service. Uh, it may look different, we may handle things different, some of it we may not agree with or like, some of it we will, but we're gonna continue to respond if we're called, and I think that's pretty important, considering the, what's, what's going on around the state.
Mr. Garcia?
Are you guys ready for my twenty-two questions now?
We are.
I was waiting for those. I was waiting.
I, I actually just had one question. I think I, I heard you say that you're, you lost an officer that, part of the training uh, with the canine to Arizona. Uh, could, do, could you give us just a brief rundown of who our officers are right now in North Bend?
Uh, yeah, I sure can. I have to look it on my... So, North Bend, currently you have Officer Goodwin, Gutsler, Kay, Lanham, Riddout, Chase Smith, Christopher Weary, and you have two sergeants that are assigned to you. Although the sergeants go to both cities, but currently you have Sergeant Moat and Sergeant Miller.
Okay. And so some of these guys have been around for quite a while.
Uh, yeah, in fact, the both sergeants are the, the two most senior sergeants you have.
Yeah.
Um, and your officers, uh, I would say every one of them is a experienced officer. You don't have any new officers um, that are currently in North Bend.
I think you knew, knew to North Bend, not just new officers.
Yeah. I, I didn't, I didn't.
Was that a question or a comment, Chris?
No, I guess that's what I, that's my, that's my, it's a, I, I guess I'm asking, are there any? I, I understand that we don't have any new officers as in they have experience, but are any of them new to North Bend right now?
Uh, mm, um, no.
Okay.
No, uh, but like I said, you, you may see other officers because they go back and forth on the need. So, but yeah, you, you have, your officers that you have assigned there have, have been there. The, the newest one would be Officer Goodwin, uh, and he came from Seattle Police Department. He's got some experience uh, at Seattle PD, and then he's been with, he's been in North Bend for about two years now.
What's his first name?
Austin.
Okay.
Okay. Chief, is that a wrap?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Miller, were you trying to get attention?
I was. Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Uh, Chief Fift, thank you so much tonight. Uh, all this information's very poignant and important. Um, my, one, one of my questions, and I'll contact you um, outside of this meeting at some point soon, is uh, who, do we have detectives? I thought we had at least one at this point.
Yeah, yeah, actually, North Bend does not uh, have detectives. The officers are, are, that are assigned to North Bend do it all. They, they do it from the start to the finish, uh, yeah, and so the department itself, at this time, even though we have two detective positions, one of the detectives was just promoted to sergeant, and so that detective position is now uh, not filled. And so we only have one detective uh, on this department.
Okay, thank you for that clarity.
You're welcome.
Okay. Seeing, seeing no other, we'll call that a wrap. Chief, again, thank you so much for the presentation, a lot of great information there. We really appreciate you coming tonight. Um, and to the captain, he does a great job in, in the community for us, and we, we very much appreciate all of your help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and thank you, counsel. And moving on, we are Mayor, Council, Administrator Concerns and Initiatives. Mr. Godhealth, you are up.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to highlight a couple of positive things that I saw in the budget amendment, since we had that on uh, consent, and one of the, you know, it's, I think the citizens would be uh, interested in understanding that we recognize the higher-than-budgeted sales tax and BNO tax collections. Uh, we recognize the decrease in revenue associated with waiving delinquent utility funds, so to me, I thought that was great. Less people, um, delinquent, recognized uh, the receipt of twenty twenty-one dis, twenty twenty-one distribution from American Fiscal Recovery Act, increased appropriations for transfer of park impact fees to Sideview MPD, and for the school impact fees to Snoqualmie Valley District. Just a few of the highlights um, in there, and finally, recognize receipt of a Conservation Futures Grant for the South Fork Landing Park, so. for the South Fork Landing Park. So in the, you know, everybody talking about COVID and financial, there's a little bit of positive news in this for the city, and I thought it was important to point that out. That's all I have for your night, tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you for sharing that. There was a lot of positive news there. Appreciate that. Mr. Loudenback.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to mention something that was a long time in coming and finally come to fruition, and that's the completion of the Park Street Roundabout, the removal of the telephone poles, the addition of the light poles, a project that our staff worked on very, very hard. And it's finally complete. It looks terrific. And I know there's a lot of other construction going on in the city, and we'd ask everybody to be careful and patient around these construction zones. But I just want to say it's really encouraging to see a lot of these projects moving on. And it's going to be great when they're when they're completed. So be careful. There are a lot of construction sites in the city, but it's it's not going to be forever, and it's moving on to a better North Bend.
Thank you, and certainly agree with you on the roundabout. Ms. Miller.
Well, Ross said it beautifully, and I was going to go forward in that capacity. I'll just add, please be patient and very careful as these projects are underway. And we hope to, I hope the positiveness out of each and every project will be seen in the end result. A lot of good things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Colan.
Positive, we actually have a very low crime rate where we live, so that is great, and we're very fortunate. And negative delta COVID, we're probably going to all have to start wearing our masks again indoors. It's not looking great, but our community is awesome, and we'll do whatever we need to do to get through another surge.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen.
I said nothing tonight. Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Elwood.
Hi. Thank you, Your Honor. Two things. One, and I know, thank you, Captain Almquist, for our correspondence. It's a great thing. We're seeing a lot of more activity in the parks, which is awesome. But I'm also, maybe it's because of all the construction going on, seeing some increased traffic and people taking liberties on some of the arterial roads that we have. And just to be mindful that, especially around park areas, there's a lot of kids out there, parking and stuff like that. So just be a little extra careful when driving around those areas, especially if your visibility is not that great. Second one is just a little, I guess, marketing pitch for Grange on the Range. Many of you old timers here know that the Grange is a a community of people that get together and try to do good stuff for for our community, raise money and so forth. For those of you that are new to the community, they've been around for quite a while, and they're having what they call the Grange on the Range. And so it's Live Music Under the Stars is what they're calling it. But it's at the nursery at Mountside. Just simply go to salawgrange.org or Google Grange on the Range, and it'll pop up. It's interesting that our community is the only one that pops up with those words. But it's Friday, August 6th this week. Music, it's a big fundraiser, and they put they try to raise a bunch of money and put it back in the community. So please hang out and go there if you if you feel comfortable being around people and want to be outside under the stars. Listen to some good music, talk to a bunch of locals. It should be a good event. So Grange on the Range, mark it for your Friday evening. Thanks.
Thank you. And our distinguished mayor pro tem, Mr. Garcia.
I don't have anything to say. I'm worried there's this weird stuff falling from the sky, and I don't know what to do.
That's that is a very good thing to hear about. For the administration, Mr. Miller.
The only thing that I would say is we've we've been doing an awful lot of promotional outreach through Dennis' good work to keep people aware of the fire danger in the community. I don't know if you've all seen, but there's been an awful lot of combustible material removed. This is a joint program with Eastside Fire and Rescue, and we're working with private and public properties to try to remove the fuel. And it's a really active program right now. We don't think we'll see a lot of rain for at least 30 or more days. And so just kind of spread the word to keep the fuel down and to be knowledgeable that, you know, urban wildfires are a reality, and we're trying to protect against it. And we have a really strong initiative in that area right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I've just got a few items for us tonight. The first two are pride issues for the city and our city staff, and and goes to everyone, but there's some individuals particularly that should be feeling good this this evening, this year. We recently received notification from the Department of Ecology that the city has been awarded the 2020 Wastewater Treatment Plant Outstanding Performance Award of approximately 300 wastewater treatment plants statewide. The North Bend plant is one of just 125 plants to achieve full compliance with its National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. It's as good as it gets. This year is the fourth year in a row, in fact, that the city has received this award. And I want to really thank our wastewater treatment plant staff for the outstanding hard work and diligence they do, particularly in the middle of a pandemic, to ensure that our plant is in full compliance. And not just one, but two awards we've received. In addition to the that one, the Washington Association of Building Officials recently recognized our building department staff with the 2021 Jurisdictional Outreach Accord for their selfless dedication and commitment to providing necessary services and keeping the building industry moving forward during the COVID-19 panic. Thank you to our building official, Colin Mercer, building inspector Jake Vanderfys, and permit technician Tom Meyer for all of their hard work and dedication this past year. Two great awards reflecting the value of our city staff. As a reminder, effective August 15th, we entered our annual water conservation plan, stage one. Given the current drought conditions, sands, what's coming from the sky this instant, drought conditions facing the most areas of Washington, water conservation is more critical than ever this year. To find out more about the city's water conservation ordinance, such as when you can water your lawn and garden during the stage one, along with other water conservation tips, please visit the news section of the city's website. The city also recently updated the homepage to the website to feature a new main navigation tab entitled, How Do I? This improvement should help citizens get to information better than ever. And then check it out when you're next on the city's website. It's on the main page. Want to share that the Si View Metropolitan Park District is holding an aquatic center planning meeting on Wednesday, August 18th at 6:30 at Si View Park. Public is welcome to attend the meeting to provide input on their priorities for a new facility. And finally, gives me great cheer also to announce that the Mountsi Senior Center is now open to the public, and onsite programming has resumed. Those visiting this facility must follow Washington State guidelines on masks and social distancing. And with that, we'll call it a wrap. If there's nothing further, I will invite a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Have a great evening. Aye.
You too. Good night.